Welcome to the August Business Meeting of the Rock Hill School District. It is now my pleasure to introduce Kirkland Stewart, a fifth grader at Bellevue Elementary School, to provide our call to order.
Good evening, Mr. Vining, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Cook, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I am Kirkland Stewart and I am honored to represent Bellevue Elementary School and bring greetings from my principal, Mr. Hood, and the faculty and staff of Bellevue. Please stand with me at this time for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's now my pleasure to tell you about my experience at Bellevue. I have attended Bellevue since kindergarten. It is truly a great school and I have been able to be a part of many different activities and clubs. A few that I have participated in are Junior Beta Club, Safety Patrol, Gifted and Talented, Girls on the Run, Wildcat Car, Talent Shows, Vocabulary Bowl, Fun Run, PE, and PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. At our school, we earn paws for different awards, rewards. My favorite club is the Junior Beta Club. We have elections and I am currently the president. I get to introduce the Kiwanis' representative for terrific kid each month and I learn how to be a leader which will help me with my goal to be the first girl president of the United States of America. Another reason Bellevue is great because of the staff and the people at the school. They provide us with clubs and activities I talked about earlier and they do prizes and tickets to keep us motivated in class. I also like how the adults always offer smiles and friendly greetings. From Mr. Orr, our janitor, that gives us a friendly hi, to our teachers that greet us at the classroom, to Ms. Wyman and Mr. Hood, our principals, that greet us at the doors of the school. Thank you for inviting me to represent Bellevue Elementary School and share my experiences from Bellevue.
Thank you, Kirkland. And you mentioned Safety Patrol. You're on Safety Patrol?
Yes, sir.
And president of Girls on the Run for this year.
I'm president of the Beta Club and I do Girls on the Run.
You do Girls on the Run. And she is joined by her parents. If they would stand, Jeff and Crystal Stewart. Crystal is the math coach at Bellevue, so you know that Kirkland is excellent in math, but her favorite subject is reading. So, and then her, she mentioned her principal and assistant principal, if y'all would stand, is, uh, the principal is Mr. Kevin Hood and the assistant principal, who you can barely see back there, is Ms. Mayber Wyman. And she has a brother, Julian. Somehow Kirkland gave him the night off where he wasn't obligated to come, so. Anyway, you did a great job. I'll open it up for any comments, questions from the board. Ms. Miller.
Well, Kirkland, first of all, you did a phenomenal job representing Bellevue and I hope that you do become the first president of the United States. That's a phenomenal goal and I think you can do it. Just set your mind to it. But I wanted to ask you something. You said that you were in Junior Beta Club and Junior Beta Club is all about community service work and helping people around you and I love doing that, too. But tell me a little bit, what have, what kind of service projects have you guys been doing? What have you been working on?
Well, there was this one, well, this one big one that took up most of our time last year. And what we did was we made these little boxes around school. And it was, the operation was called Love for Levine's.
Oh, nice.
And we got toys and stuff. People would donate and we'd send them into Levine's for children who have cancer.
So how many hours do you have to do in order to be a good member, so to speak, of Beta Club?
I think you have to do good grades. I'm not sure what the percentage is.
And then a certain amount of community service hours, right?
Um, I'm not sure.
But anyway, good job.
Thank you.
I've always wondered about Girls on the Run. How often do you meet and where do you run and what do you do while you're there, other than run?
Well, we did, we tried to do one community service or two on Girls on the Run before we went. And we also, uh, we also run the 5K.
Around the drive? That big drive by the cafeteria or the one?
The car loop is where we run every day and then at the very end of the season, we do a 5K, which is sixteen, sixteen laps around, I think. And, and we do it around like the fountain or something. It starts down there and it's a very near.
But do you have a coach?
Yes.
And how many girls do it?
Um, it depends who wants to.
About, about.
About, uh, it's just an estimation because I have no clue. About fourteen, I'm guessing.
I never got to do that. It sounds very interesting.
Ms. Douglas.
Caitlin.
Now you're a big fifth grader, right? So you're senior class over at Bellevue, right? I want you to think for just a few minutes because you're just going to be with them this year. What is one thing that you would like to see changed at Bellevue? You don't have to worry about them, just.
Uh, let me think. Uh, this is a hard one. I would have to say, I'm not sure.
So now you have been a fifth grader for a week, going on your second week. What is it like to be in fifth grade?
Well, it's definitely a little bit more challenged, challenging than a fourth grader's and I like it very much because we're like top of the school.
Thank you.
Anne.
Caitlin. I'm so proud to hear how, how many things you are participating in. It's good to be able to, to come to school and still get involved in all those different kinds of activities. And I'm sure that when you are leaving Bellevue at the end of this year, you'll be able to look back and think about some of the wonderful, wonderful things that you have, you have done while at Bellevue. I'm just so proud to see you here, those beautiful dimples that you have and I think you're a little bit shy, aren't you?
Kind.
Very good. Continue to do the good things that you're now doing.
Thank you.
Wendy.
I heard you did an excellent job today. What's something you are most looking forward to with your fifth grade year?
Um, I'm not sure.
Which of your organizations do you like? Do you have a favorite?
Yes, Junior Beta Club.
Junior Beta Club, great. Thank you for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kirkland. The local news media was notified in writing of the agenda on Friday, August 24th. I now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Terry Hutchinson has moved and Wendy Cole has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next up is recognitions, Dr. Cook.
Kirkland, the adults in the room tonight were wondering if they were going to get asked as many questions as you were, so they are thankful. All the questions have been asked tonight, okay? Good job, good job. It is a distinct honor to have some recognitions and for Dr. Jane Sharp to join me in those recognitions this evening. Each year, the district recognizes a beginning teacher of the year at the elementary and secondary levels who successfully finished their first year in the teaching profession in the prior year and we are so thankful that they continue to come back. The elementary winner is Jenna Smith, who is a special education teacher at Bellevue Elementary. I had the pleasure of going to Ms. Smith's classroom last week and presenting her with beautiful flowers. And she, Ms. Smith, comes from a history of longtime educators, good stock, I would say, in that family. So we are excited to recognize Ms. Jenna Smith as being the elementary beginning teacher of the year. Congratulations. And I also need to mention that Ms. Smith is joined by her administrators, Ms. Wyman and Mr. Hood, and her wonderful family. Thank you guys for being here as well. Our secondary winner is Mr. Joe Brant and he is a seventh grade science teacher at Dutchman Creek Middle School. And I, too, had the opportunity to visit his classroom last week and we are so excited about his recognition and so thankful that he chooses to teach middle school. And his lovely wife, Ms. Brant, is with us this evening and his principal, Mr. Moen. I know I saw Mr. Moen somewhere. Oh, there he is back there filming. How to miss him. Congratulations, Mr. Brant. Thank you. Ms. Melissa Tucker, an English teacher at Rock Hill High School, was named Rock Hill Schools 2018-19 District Teacher of the Year during this year's Back to School pep rally. As the district teacher of the year, Tucker receives a 2018 Honda Civic EX. I hope you drove it tonight.
I did.
Great. For use during the upcoming school year, courtesy of Honda Cars of Rock Hill, $1,000 from the district, and a $500 classroom grant from Rock Hill Schools Education Foundation, Tucker will serve as the co-chair of the Rock Hill Schools Teacher Forum and is now in the running to be selected as the South Carolina Teacher of the Year. She is joined by her principal, Mr. All, and I believe a little young man named Doodle. So let's congratulate Ms. Tucker. Thank you. Anything you want to say?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you, first and foremost, to Mr. All. I mentioned this at the rally, but honestly, the support that our administration gives to us is phenomenal. And this is starting year seventeen for me. Sixteen of those seventeen have been at Rock Hill High and I just feel very blessed to be a part of a staff that's really supportive. It really is a Bearcat family. I know that everybody says that, but it really is a Bearcat family and I'm hoping to continue to represent them well and hopefully to represent the district very well and not put a scratch on that car. So, thank you so much for your faith in me and for recognizing me. I appreciate it.
And Doodle, we appreciate you supporting mom. Congratulations to Major John Murray with the Rock Hill High School Air Force JROTC Unit for being recognized by the Air Force as a 2018 Air Force JROTC Region Six Outstanding Instructor of the Year. Individuals represent the best of the best across the country in Air Force JROTC. Through this award, the Air Force honors exemplary contributions and impact on the cadets, school, and community. Colonel Paul Lips extends his deepest appreciation to all winners for their dedication, hard work, and investment they have put into the Air Force JROTC program and into cadets. He says the instructors represent the highest examples of the Air Force core values which are crucial to the success of Air Force JROTC mission. And he's supported tonight by his principal, Mr. All. Major Murray, thank you and congratulations. We're very proud of you. Two board members have earned recognition by the South Carolina School Boards Association for achievement in the association's 2017-18 Boardmanship Institute. The South Carolina School Boards Association Boardmanship Institute offers a year-round training curriculum to help board members develop skills and stay abreast of state and national education issues. Workshops focus on school law, advocacy, and legislation, improving board operations, leadership for improving student achievement, and other timely topics. Board members can give up to six levels of recognition by earning points that are accrued annually from July through June. Helena Miller reached level three after earning 100 points within one year. She receives a certificate and a gold pin. Please come forward, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
And Wendy Cole reached level two after earning 40 points and receives a certificate and a silver pin. Thank you. Statewide, recognize school board members for reaching one of the six levels for the 2017-18 year with certificates of achievement and a lapel pin designated their level of accomplishment in the institute. We're very proud of these board members and congratulations. Thank you. At our last meeting, the board approved the hiring of two individuals. This evening, I would like to introduce each of them and share briefly about their new role. Dr. Missy Breakfield, now, excuse me, is now Rock Hill Schools Executive Director of Elementary Education. In this role, she will work directly with each of our elementary schools and early childhood programs. Breakfield, who has worked in Rock Hill since 1993, has spent the past 15 years as director of federal and special programs. Previously, she has been a teacher at Rosewood Elementary and served as a teacher and assistant principal at Bellevue Elementary. Dr. Breakfield brings both an understanding of the district's hallmarks of strength, vision, and possibilities, as well as a sound and long commitment to our teachers, schools, and community. Her experience has afforded her opportunities to progressively work with and alongside elementary school principals to collaboratively support schools. And we welcome Dr. Breakfield and glad you're part of the team. Welcome. And I'd just like to take a minute to recognize Ms. Jill Pappas. Ms. Pappas has been the executive director of elementary education and she and her husband will be leaving to call out west home. And Ms. Pappas, on behalf of everyone in the district, just want to say thank you for your service to this district and all the great things that you've done while you've been here. So thank you very much. And our additional individual that we bring to the team is unable to be with us, but I'd like to share his information with you anyways. Derek Johnson has been promoted to district literacy coach, a role that will allow him to work directly with teachers to improve literacy instruction across the district. Johnson began teaching in Rock Hill Schools in 2005 as a special education teacher at Oakdale Elementary after completing the program for alternative certification of educators' PACE. Since 2011, he has served Northside Elementary School as a literacy teacher, where he worked with small groups of students, providing literacy intervention, as well as running records training for classroom teachers. And we look forward to Mr. Johnson joining the team. This concludes our recognitions for the evening. Chairman.
Dr. Cook, if we have no citizen participation, I'd just remind everyone that there's a sign-up sheet at the back of the room. Anybody wishes to address the board about an item that's on the agenda can sign up at the beginning of the meeting and will have an opportunity to do so. Next up is Consent Action Agenda. It includes a lot of minutes, the June 11th work session and data session, the June 25th business meeting, the July 9th business meeting, and the July 9th board retreat and July 23rd business meeting, approval of personnel recommendations, and approval of a new course related to the governor's school program at Southport High School. I now entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved by Terry Hutchinson, seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is approved, seven zero. Consent action item is, are approved. Next up is the action agenda. We have three policies for second read because we only have three. I'll just take them individually. First one is policy LEB, non-school sponsored support organizations. I entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
Moved by Helena Miller as her second.
Second.
Second by Mildred Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand.
I took it down quickly, but yes, I'm in favor.
Well, I'm looking at the two to my right. Ms. Douglas and Dr. Sharp, did y'all vote? All right, seven zero. I missed it. You didn't hold it up long enough. Next up is policy JJE, an administrative rule and deformed student fundraising activities. Entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
It's moved by Terry Hutchinson, seconded by Jane Sharp. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Last policy is policy JJF, Student Activities Funds. Entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
Moved by Helena Miller, seconded by Terry Hutchinson. Discussion.
Just a comment. On all these three policies, I think that this has been a very good collaboration between students, parents, and the school district. We've had a lot of revisions as we've gone through. That's why they're very colorful in terms of the print color in, in the packet, but I think it's, it's nice to see how it can work the right way when people do collaborate together. So just a comment on that.
Anything else? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. These three policies now, these now up for second read now become policy and will be put into our policy manual. That concludes our action agenda. Next up is communications, which we have none. Just a reminder, any individual wishes to speak to the board about a subject matter can do so by having a written request submitted to the district office before the Wednesday, before the meeting. And if anybody wants to do that, they can get it under communications. Next up is reporter superintendent, Dr. Cook.
It was a joy to visit each school in our district during the first week of school. The first week of school brought many exciting opportunities and certainly a few that we keep in memory of some of our families. Instead of talking much about the first week, I'd like to invite you to enjoy a video produced by our multimedia communication specialist, Aaron Sheffield, showcasing the excitement we saw as we toured each of our campuses. I've never had two men, Mr. Sheffield and Mr. Foss, so closely in my face all the time with cameras, so I'm excited to see what they have produced for the week in review of our first week.
They have great pictures, so I'm going to really enjoy them.
These gentlemen work really hard.
Are you excited about school?
Yeah.
What grade are you going in?
Um, kindergarten.
I know.
Bonjour!
Hey, everybody, freeze. Hands on your shoulders.
Did everybody have a good first day of school?
Yeah! Good morning, Dr. Cook!
Good morning to you! And wow, so impressive! Thank you to our communications department. Great job, great job.
Nice job.
And if there's any doubt about what greatness is happening in the Rock Hill School District, that gives you a quick glimpse of what great things are happening in our communities. So proud. Early this evening, it was a pleasure to welcome more than 40 community partners and volunteers to a reception that was held in their honor for their contributions and service to our schools over the past year. We appreciate each group represented this evening and say thank you once again for their efforts to partner with our schools and departments to serve the students and teachers in our district. Just a reminder, the school district will be closed on Monday, September 3rd, for Labor Day. On September 14th, district leaders will be hosting the first lunch and learn in a series of informational sessions for area realtors. We believe this series of meetings will provide a rich opportunity to engage in dialogue with real estate agents about our school district and the unique programs that set our district apart from others in the area. Our high school student councils from all three high schools will be hosting a forum for candidates seeking office with the Rock Hill Schools Board of Trustees. The forum will be held at 6:30 PM on September 25th at the central office. All candidates seeking office have been invited to attend. The school board will meet next on Monday, September 10th, when it holds its work session that will begin at 4:00 PM at the central office. The next business meeting will be held Monday, September 24th. As a reminder, we will continue to livestream school board meetings on Facebook and on the district website. Dr. Joya Holmes and Mr. Ron Rivera will travel to Chattanooga, Tennessee on August 30th and 31st as part of a delegation of community leaders representing the city of Rock Hill and Rock Hill School District. As a partner with the city of Rock Hill, our team members will be instrumental in helping to define future development in the city. On Saturday, September 22nd, at District 3 Stadium, our high school marching bands will host the Old English Festival of Bands. This all-day event will feature schools from North and South Carolina. All elementary and middle schools have held their open house events and our three high schools will host their open house event tomorrow night, Tuesday, August 28th at 6:00 PM. The Applied Technology Center will host an open house on Thursday, September 6th, beginning at 6:00 PM. And finally, the Build on the Rock website has been updated with photos. You're encouraged to visit the district's capital building program, Build on the Rock website, www.rock-heal.k12.sc.us/buildontherock for more information. This website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see the project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Next up is review of the school board work session from August 13th. Next up is review of the school board work session from August 13th. We held the monthly data session. We reviewed policy LEB, non-school-sponsored support organizations. Reviewed policy JJE, administrative rule and form student fundraising activities. Reviewed policy JJE, Student Activities Funds. Received information on new course recommendation. Received a construction update. Discussed community visits. Heard details of upcoming school board candidate forum, which will be September 25th, an opportunity for, and we will stream that.
Yes, sir.
An opportunity for the community to see the candidates. I discussed other and future business and held an executive session for personnel matters. In other and future business, I'd like to add my comments to the video, about the videos that the communications department has been putting out, extremely high quality. It's really great for the district. I like to think that they're causing other districts to pick up their game, particularly Greenville School System and Charlotte Mac. As some of you know, I follow a lot of districts around the Carolinas, and the quantity of their videos and the quality has come up, still has not reached the quality of our videos. But I like to think they're trying to keep up with the Rock Hill School District. I also like to make a comment about Jill Pappas. This may be her last meeting today, and I want to say that Jill has more positive energy than anyone I have ever met.
Yes.
And any day that I have just met her briefly makes my day better. And I want to thank her for spending time in our district on her life path, and I know that, is it, New Mexico, Arizona?
Arizona.
Arizona will be much brighter after y'all get there. And I want to thank you for what you've done for the district, and we really appreciate your contribution and wish you well in your endeavors. We had a couple of members that went to the school board association meeting. We'll report on that at the work session. And I noticed in the hotline, only three members have signed up for the advocacy meeting at Chester.
I'll be going to that.
I'm signing up.
So, we're going to have everybody, Jane, are you going?
I don't think so.
So, we'll have six board members by my count, just here at Chester. And that school board association, I think, is, tries to update the boards on legislative issues coming up and try to get feedback on what the individual boards think are the issues facing. And that'll be the 13th at Chester High School. Ms. Miller?
Yes, a couple of things. Wanted to make sure that we're going to get that update on mental health policies for the work session in September. I know that we had a lot this month, so it kind of got pushed, but I really want to make sure that we get that in September. The second thing is, I'd like some more information, if we could get a short presentation maybe at that work session, on related arts and classroom time. I know that there have been cuts made to the related arts time from like 45 down to 40 minutes, and I know that other classrooms have had increased instructional time. I hear that, you know, there may be people who are upset because our PE time and some other related arts are cut, and it's difficult because it's one of those subjects that's hard to, you know, 40 minutes is not a lot of time. So, I'd kind of like to get a presentation with some of the reasoning behind it and just more information for people to understand, especially since we're pushing, you know, more of a healthy living and all that in the district. It's, we, that's why. So, that would be great for September.
Any other comments?
Do we have this Mark session planned yet for our ATC? We had talked about that on presentation from Mr. Rivera and hearing how many students have signed up, how many are not able to get into the classes, to figure out if we need to start seeing how we can increase that.
Yes, ma'am, and Mr. Rivera, he is ready and willing and able, so yes, ma'am, we are ready.
That's awesome. Looking forward to it.
He has done a good job of compiling a lot of data and facts, and he's ready to present.
Yeah, I'd love to share my 150 slides.
I'd love to see them.
Me too.
Not at a board meeting. Oh, I'll take it at the board meeting. It's important.
I will too.
Any other issues? Anne, I'll get back to you, Terry.
We've had so much, we've gotten in the paper so recently, Saturday and Sunday. Is there any information that people would like to, that we would like to share with our audience as far as the information that we've gotten in the paper recently?
Now, I would suggest, and Dr. Cook can correct me, but until those issues are resolved, it's better for us not to get a report because there's a chance if appeal comes through that we would have to sit, and any information before everything is complete could be prejudicial.
That's fine.
And so, I would recommend, I do think there's a time, and it may be this meeting, I'd be surprised if it is, for us to get an update. But right now, because of our position of being the final appeal, I think we should not give a report until it's finished, but I'll let you correct me.
No, so you're exactly right. We're continuing to work on the situation, and we'll certainly provide you with that in the near future.
And also the accident, and the accident on Ogden Road.
And that may be something more appropriate for the hotline, too. Terry?
Yeah, I guess I'll make it official that I will take your place on the Catawba Regional Advisory Council when you step down in November, no longer.
Okay.
Play with us.
Playing is not the word I would have used, but anything else? All right, we have an executive session. We expect to be taking action. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters, hirings, and legal matter, legal services.
So moved.
All right, Wendy Cole has made motion, seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? Where will we, we will do the executive session in here. So, we'll take a short break to clear the room. Anybody needs to take a necessary break to do so, and all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. We stand adjourned for executive session. I entertain a motion to leave executive session and enter business session.
Second.
Terry Hutchinson made the motion and Anne Reed seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Are there any motions coming out of executive session?
Yes, sir. I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for a district math coach.
Second.
Second by Terry Hutchinson. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Any other motions coming out of executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that we grant the request of the personnel employees, employee to be released from the employee's contract with the district and that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding the employee's breach of contract.
Second.
Seconded by Helena Miller. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. I believe that's all the motions coming out of executive session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Moved by Terry Hutchinson, seconded by Jane Sharp. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. We stand adjourned.